That showing up?
Part of it is, part of it's not.
We need to test the mic and make sure it's out there too.
Testing, testing, good.
Yeah, I've got it over here.
Okay, are we good to go now?
Okay, it's for the public to know we had some technical difficulties and I'm not sure what all we heard and saw, but we're going to start over briefly through the first few slides and then we'll go through the entire presentation over.
Yes, sir. Okay.
We're all up and good.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Well, again, my name's Ben Marshall, I'm with Gray Saper Curtis Architects, or GHC for short. We're out of the Dallas office. We, I'm serving as a project manager and project architect for the project. We have been hired by the county to do a facilities assessment of the Puddin Hill building in sight and then a programming effort was a subsequent task the county hired us for and then most recently the county's hired us to produce full design documentation for relocating county functions out to the Puddin Hill site and renovating the building. So let me run through the beginning of our first couple of phases to update everybody on the project and then be happy to answer any questions for anyone. So this is the site that we've been talking about, again, the existing Puddin Hill site right off the I-30 frontage road on the east side of town. Part of our original facility assessment was both architectural and structural, so this is a sheet from our structural assessment noting cracks or any kind of areas that need to be repaired, replaced, and generally speaking, the facility is in good shape. As part of our facilities assessment that the county hired us for, architecturally, we have the capability of doing 3D scans of our building that we can deliver to the client and we can use and document preparation and creation, especially in older facilities like this where we don't have existing drawings, scans like this are exceptionally helpful. So this kind of night vision shot you see on the screen is what that is, so we're able to go in and actually measure any part of the facility that we need to, because we're able to provide the county with the building that they have and so they can make the best decisions for what they want to do with it. And so we've, that was part of our deliverable to the county for the facility assessment. And then after that, the county engages to do a detailed programming effort with all their county functions, and so we looked at the courthouse, we looked at the old juvenile detention center, we looked at the voter administration, and then looked at the Puddin Hill campus out on I-30. And we met with the district attorney, met with the county clerk, met with voter administration, HR, community development, 911, et cetera, to understand what the county currently has, what they need, what are immediate needs, what are long-term hopes for what they could have, and try to help the county understand what do they have on hand, where could they potentially move out to the I-30 campus, how could they go in and backfill and shuffle the puzzle pieces around at the current county courthouse and just provide them with a really thorough programming effort so that they can make the best decisions for what you guys need to do for all your different county offices. So this courthouse ground floor plan is just an example of some of the things we studied. We went through many iterations of if we move this here, or move this there, or took this out to I-30, how could we backfill here, and how could we expand here, and so this is part of the deliverable that we gave to the county of what they could potentially do in both the I-30 campus and then backfill in some of their other existing locations, whether at the courthouse or at the juvenile center. And then at the end of the programming effort, we looked at about seven departments that we could relocate out to I-30 and gave them the simple, gave you guys a simple blocking diagram for what, how you could use the I-30 campus, and so that was the end of our programming deliverable. And then the county engages to produce full design documentation for relocating a number of those county functions out to Puddin Hill, demolishing, this is not in our scope, but our proposal would be to demolish the existing masonry building out front and then to renovate and reskin the existing building to bring it up, bring it up to code and make it functional for a new county municipal building. So this is the existing site plan, I think this is where we left off before we had our AV stuff fixed. So again, the main L portion of the building is about 26,000 square feet, it has a basement just in the elbow under it, it's about 5,000 square feet, so about 32,000 total. Again, does not include this masonry building, it's scheduled to get demolished, we needed to get rid of it in order to park all the minimum stalls out in front. And then we're also going to regrade the site, you can see back here, if you've looked at these drawings before, basically there's a really drop, big drop-off at that site behind the building, and so because of all the land that the county owns around there, we're able to cost-effectively raise the dirt around there to make it a much more accessible site.
How far will you go out from the wall on the backside, how far?
Oh, it was probably six to eight feet in certain spots, like from the finished floor down to the finished grade, so it's pretty steep.
Thank you.
You bet. So this is our current site plan, again, the masonry building will be gone, this is our minimum parks, I believe there are about 120 parks that we need to have to service this facility. One of the main things we added would be a covered drop-off, it'd be two cars wide next to the community room where a lot of the voting would occur or any other just large gatherings that the county would need to use in a community room that we have located right here currently. And then you'll see it later on the 3D images, but we're proposing to add on a continuous walkway in front of the county so that when the public comes to the facility, they can park, obviously in front of the building, and then they're able to hit any different county office that they need to, is just kind of a one-stop shop for community development or whatever the needs might be that the public need to be served here. So this is a color-coded floor plan of the different departments that we're proposing to relocate out to the Puddin Hill campus, so if you look up here in the top right in the blue, we've got 911 addressing, community development, the health department, law enforcement are all on that top right corner, and part of the flow here particularly is because when the public comes to do community development, they're hitting all of these county offices in a row, and right now when they come into the courthouse, they're kind of all over the place and it's not very efficient. So our hope would be is that they could come in here and have kind of a nice flow of one-stop shop as they hit all the different departments that they need to.
One of those departments is in this building they have to also come over and talk to.
Yes, yes, very, so we're hoping to, proposing to improve that for sure. There's a little bit of growth built in, but not a lot, it's a mix of private offices, open offices, mechanical rooms, some conference rooms and workrooms, again, based on the programming effort that we had previously done for the county. And then if you go down here in the gray where you see all the tables and chairs, this is the community room where the voting would occur. We've also got it set up with a bi-party, or a bi-fold door to separate that out if you need two smaller rooms, whatever function the county might have, have some audio/video capabilities in there. We also have an EOC room in here that will have hardened to a degree that you guys currently use out of the juvenile building here that will relocate out to the I-30 campus, so that would be where, you know, post-disaster, the county could operate its functions out of that room.
Also, in locating it there, having the community room, if it was a big disaster and we had to have a lot of people, we'd be able to flow them right into that community room, so we'd have plenty of room to handle the emergency if we needed to.
Yes, sir, absolutely, and we've got that planned, we have a generator for the facilities, we have that area specifically planned to be on backup generators that the county can continue to operate successfully after a disaster. And then down here, kind of moving to the elbow of the building, we've got a larger staff break room for all the staff, that's centrally located in the building, have utility spaces and mechanical areas and support spaces back here as well, restrooms and storage. And then the basement that's under this, mostly under the green-gray area, again, in the elbow, you can see a blow-up over here to the right in this enlarged square, again, is about 5,000 square feet, we're just proposing for that to be used as storage, I believe it was previously used, it's some refrigerated or frozen storage for the bakery. And again, it's flooded right now and it seems from our assessment that the issue is actually just, there's a drain at the bottom of the staircase that goes to the outside and it appears that that's actually the problem for the water backing up, which is good news, it's not coming to the walls, we had a disaster relief company actually come out and take a look to verify that, so that's good news, we should just be able to provide new drainage piping and clean it up and should be good to go to use as storage, which is great. And there's an internal staircase and an external staircase to get access to that and to get out of it. And then moving along to the green, this is the voter admin area, and so we have a large voter equipment storage area with a dock door out of the back, so we spent a lot of time with the voter administration lead talking about how the voter flow works for you guys on elections day, so obviously there's not as much going on day-to-day in the voter administration offices, but when election time hits, it is obviously, it's a bonanza for everybody, and so we spent a lot of time talking through how could we efficiently store all the voting machines, how could we make sure that they're easily accessible, how could we make sure that they're easily transported to all the different polling locations throughout the county, and so that's what that larger area is, we have count rooms for when people come in and help with the count during voting, watch areas for when there's people watching when their votes are being counted, offices for the full-time staff and support and break spaces, so that's what the green area is, and there's also some front, public-facing booths as well, so if you see in white along the front above the dark green and lime green, that's the public access corridor where they would come and interact with either the county clerk or the voter administration. And then the south, planned south side would be all the staff, the staff functions.
And being and having that where that's located next to the community room, we'll be able to do, should be able to do all our early voting there now instead of having to go out to the civic center or somewhere else, because it's, that's not a very good way to handle the early voting, having to go out to the civic center because they don't have access to all their records and there's running back and forth or calling back and forth trying to get any problem with the voter straightened out, so we'll be right there on site, make it a lot more convenient. And with the covered drive-up area, the handicap, can, we can take them, a pole pen or a paper ballot, I guess, Martin uses paper ballot, they have to vote outside, I think, but then we can take them out so that if they can't come into the building, an employee can go out there and they can vote in their vehicle and then take it back in, so, and be out of the weather, that's a big deal.
Yes, yes, absolutely, we, and we may, this is a much larger canopy than we might typically do for a single, again, it's a two-car drop-off to make sure that you guys can handle that volume and service, and service those citizens well. And then lastly, this lime green or yellow green at the far bottom left, that's a county clerk, and so that houses all of their offices, all their functions and equipment and storage that they need. This large storage area at the left is a lot of the sensitive documentation that's being stored at the county courthouse right now downtown, and so we should be able to relocate a lot of that and it be protected out there at the I-30 campus, that's what a lot of that, that storage is going to be, or planning to be used for at the moment. Yeah, I think that really hits the program, any questions here before I continue?
Commissioners, any questions? Red, I guess, move on.
Very good. To look at some of the exterior design we're sitting so far, so again, we're proposing to basically strip the building down to the pre-engineered metal frame, which is in good condition, and the foundation, and then reskin the building to bring it up to energy codes, this would be a new roof and new walls. What we're trying to do with this concept is propose something that feels very Texas, feels very Hunt County and is cost-effective, but still looks nice and something you guys can be proud of, and so we're showing metal R panels, which is what, very basic material in the striped white, and then some limestone base around the front with our covered walkway that stretches along the front, where you, the public can come and hit each of the different county departments when they come to visit the facility. This would be a look from, under that, that covered walkway where again, the county could come, or the public could come in from the parking lot and get in the walkway and access any of the different county functions as they come to the facility, whatever they need, and certain would, certain functions would be locked depending on what time of day it is, or certain will be open especially during polling time, so that'll be controlled.
This is a good picture to show why we were raising the site up, because if we left it down, we had a lot of ramps for handicap, it was going to be not as convenient for the public to access the building.
Yeah.
Where that's coming up, nearly to slab grade, right below slab.
Yeah, yes, sir, and that's on the both and, the front and the back, which helps a lot, both with cost and just with accessibility for the public, and there's a good five to six feet drop-off at a lot of these locations where currently, you know, the trucks would be coming up and going down to grade so that their truck was at the finished floor height, the dock height, so we're going to bring that up and make that better for everybody.
Makes it look a lot better, too.
Absolutely. And then this is a look from the front corner near, this is where the current retail building is, that kind of wooden retail saloon looking thing that you guys, that they have on the front, this is where this is, where community development is proposed to be. So again, metal R panels and standing seam metal roof, a little bit of stone around the base of the building, an opportunity here at the front for a Hunt County seal and some landscape along the front of the building as well, and you can see the larger covered drop-off for the two vehicles down here in the background on this view. As far as budget goes, which is never a popular topic nowadays with anything, our current, we hired a third-party cost estimator as part of our design services, it provided us a cost estimate at the schematic design level, they'll do another at DD and another at CDs, so currently for total site and building, the estimate we received was around 13 and a half million for this whole project. And then as far as schedule goes, I think I mentioned this before, the AV got reset, but we've already delivered the schematic design back in June, today is set to be about our design development issue, this is a second out of a third of the milestones, so that'll probably be about a week or two from now, the rest of my team's meeting with a lot of the different county offices as we speak over in the courthouse to verify programming, verify where our floor plan is and make sure we have all their needs covered, and then the goal would be to have the full set of documents completed by the end of the year.
Yeah, I have a question, reference to that, I was considering about the archives that we have as far as the county clerk.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, right now, we have them up on, you know, different floors and stuff like that, one that's on the bottom floor, some that's on the second. Well, the, and this might be a question for Becky, those moving all that out there, is there enough basically protection in reference to storms and stuff like that, those cabinets that they sit in, do y'all have them bolted down to the floor and all this, or what, what kind of, what kind of safety as far as protecting those?
Yeah, let me go first, then you can probably fill in, so it's in a two-hour fire-rated enclosure separated from the rest of the building currently, and we ran that through the fire marshal because we don't want to have a wet sprinkler system around those documents in case those go off, so it's going to be separated from the rest of the building, the rest of the building will have fire sprinklers, but this one portion will not, and the fire marshal is okay as long as we properly fire-rated that, so that's as far as the fire protection and water protection goes, that's what we're doing at this point, was there any other part of that, Becky, I missed?
The only other thing would be, some of the shelving is bolted down, some of it is not, so that would be, we would have to assess that as we started moving things out there if we needed to bolt it down to the floor or the wall.
So we'll lean on Becky for those answers as we get it tied down, right now, in fact, Becky and I ran over this this morning, she gave us a very thorough list of every piece of equipment and storage that she'd like to get relocated out there, and so we have that laid out on, in that room, and so some of the storage is staying at the courthouse, but a good bulk of it is moving.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Most of the public access documents will be out there.
That's correct, yep.
Most, if not all, I think we're trying to get.
Yes, we're trying to get everything.
Trying to get everything that the public comes in and uses and accesses, some of the books you're talking about upstairs and all, those are the old, old 1800 records, aren't they? Yeah, they go way back, so only people looking for historical gets to go up there and look through them.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
You bet. And that is the end of what I've got so far, so again, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. And I have some leave-behinds as well for each of you guys, it's just the duplicated material we looked at on the screen, happy to pass out.
Any questions?
Ben, I know you said there's not a whole lot of expansion in here, but five, 10 years down the road, this building, are we able to expand on the backside or something if need be?
Sure, I mean, you have all the land in the world, for sure, and we do have some expansion, I guess what I was trying to communicate is the program is not overly aggressive, there's not going to be a like 50% empty space, I mean, at each department, there's probably spaces for two to six additional employees per department based on what their immediate needs are, and some of them are immediate needs, like you could hire them now, is kind of what we've been told, so there's definitely room for the next few years, I think, but as far as like major expansion, there's certainly all the room in the world that you guys could use out there.
So that was two, I'm sorry, can you repeat that, two to three employees per department?
Ish, yeah, I'd say so.
Okay.
Man, probably, and it depends on each one, some are obviously larger than others, I think there's an extra office built for 911 right now, the community development's got four to five open desks that are built in for expansion, I think voter admin has one or two, county clerk maybe has two or three, four, got it to four, so if that kind of gets you a range, so maybe 12 to 15 total spots that would be for expansion.
Some of those are cubicles, like.
And some of them are cubes, right, not full offices.
They're not full offices, they're just room for cubicles.
Yesks.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so, so beyond that expansion, we'd have to build something else.
Yeah, you, we, you guys gave enough program to fill it, for sure, yep.
Another good thing about going up to grade, if we want to add on, if we need to expand, county clerk, voters, whatever, it'd be real easy just to push them out to grade and add on to them in the back and it would be very easy.
Absolutely.
So it'd be very expensive that way.
And there is 5,000 square feet of storage in the basement, which is great, you obviously wouldn't want to put anything sensitive down there, but that is there, which is a positive for you guys.
What was the timeframe on build-out?
You know, I need to look, I want to guess it was around in the 12-month range for construction total, yeah.
You mentioned a scheduled demolition of that front part.
Yes.
Is that, that's actually scheduled?
That is outside of my scope, that's something that the county's communicated they wanted to handle, so I'm not sure.
We've asked, I think, six bedders to bid it, probably next meeting, we'll probably bring in a recommendation of which one to go with, I think the, I think the lowest bid was 66,000 to tear it down and remove it all, and not just the building, but that is some additional things that architects suggested we go ahead, there's a ramp out there.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And there were some other concrete features out there that they said that would be in the way to go ahead and get them to remove them while they're there.
Yes, sir.
So we'll probably have that at the next meeting, Mark.
That would be in addition to the 13.5.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And you will see too, on the, on the, on that estimate at this point, usually at SD levels, they have a pretty healthy design contingency, so you can see right now they're holding a 20%, which is pretty high, so usually as like the DD estimate would come and then obviously the final construction document estimate, that number gets a lot closer and hopefully there's opportunities to squeeze this down, but, but this is still a good, a good ballpark, I would think.
I appreciate your presentation, I think it was good and thorough, gives us a lot of information when you think about.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, did you?
You do have pamphlets to give.
I do, I will, I will hand those out either, you can hand them out right now, Judge, or wait till the end?
Yeah, that's fine, either way, just leave them, we can pick them up.
Okay.
And give them to Jessica, and, or either way.
Okay, yeah, I'll leave them to Jessica, I've got stacks, so there's, there's plenty to pass around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, action item four.
Judge, do you have a, you mentioned we might hear next week, next meeting about the demolition.
Correct.
When were you planning on taking action to approve what was presented today? Is there a plan on that?
Yes, he's going to, he said he would be submitting the plans in December.
Oh, okay.
I would hope that we'd probably, over the month of December, give Chris, Kim, our facilities manager, to go through it as well as us, to look at the plans, make sure that we're in agreement with all, we, probably what we're doing today is meeting with all the departments and they'll be moving a few things around with the departments based on, they got more detailed drawings today of the floor plans than what they've been working, they started out with a box and then went with some sketches and now it's kind of getting down to where they've got most of what they, the people want, but there'll always be a few changes, Becky had a few comments and changes on where they're at right now and those will continue, but hopefully we'll be bidding it around the first of the year.
As he walks out, it occurred to me I had another question for him, I can follow up with him.
He may be.
Just on the porch where they did the assessment of this building, did they get, sorry. Sorry, Ben, you walked out the door and I thought of a question, just right then. You mentioned y'all included this building, 2700.
Yes.
In the, in the assessment, just was that to evaluate whether it was, be suitable for any of these adjustments in the future?
It was, yep, to see what other functions you could potentially move over here.
What were your findings on that or recommendations?
Well, basically, one of the, one of the departments we looked at was the district attorney, which it turns out found like there's a better spot for them to stay.
Not necessarily, I mean, we were, what happened, we asked for the assessment over here to move the district attorney over here, which he was agreeable to do, and the county attorney would do the same, but they got about the same amount of space and they're both have no room in them, they're doubling up some offices, I think, in some of them. The area where the health department is, is not large enough, and if we pushed it into the area where homeland security is, it would become large enough, but we haven't had opportunity yet to look at the wall that there is the jail wall, which is a solid wall, I think 12 inches thick with reboring and it goes all the way to the roof, what it's going to take to penetrate that to be able to access that other area, and then behind it, to the east is the same thing, and then you have the holding cells that were in there that would all have to be torn out, so until we get somebody to get us some numbers to see what we can do there, so we, we haven't made that decision yet, because we're 18 months away from even thinking about being able to move out there, so that gives us some time to figure out what we're going to do with this building, if not, we can, you know, there's always opportunities that we can, somebody who's going to stay at the courthouse might be located over here and expand the attorneys at the courthouse.
Yeah, Commissioner, just generally speaking, this building's very difficult to do much in because of how it was originally built, any kind of renovation you do in a, in a, in a jail is expensive, everything's concrete, everything is expensive to demo, and the way that it's chopped up is really difficult, so we did a couple of different studies on what functions could move over here, and it was just very difficult to do anything in an efficient manner or do it in a cost-effective manner just because of the cost of what it would be to do anything over here.
You know, I.
The old cells are just built-in cubicles, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Employee retention might be a little tough after that.
I bet you'd be real easy, actually.
Yeah, well, it'd be employee detention at that point, I think.
I would be non-understandable to basically have your district and county attorney move away from the courtroom, that surprises me. Your district attorney and as far as your county attorney also, as far as prosecuting for the state, it's going to be a lot of traveling back and forth to the court.
Not in today's world, Philip, we've already discussed all that, everything's electronic and if, and they've got everything on a laptop, if they happen to have something back at the office, somebody can just scan it and send it to their email and they got it, so they said it was not.
Well, I understand that, but I'm talking about courts, you go through there.
They have no problem leaving the courthouse.
Hmm, but they're going to have to walk back to it to court.
We didn't talk to the county attorney much, but we did talk to the DEA a lot, and he's really needing to be somewhere else, we had, we just hired a victim's advocate person and we're supposed, he's supposed to have a room in there and it's a shared office that they're having to use for a victim's advocate area, so when, if there's a trial going on, the victims stay in there, and we really don't have any place to accommodate that, which we're basically being required to do those things, so it's, it's a need, and we'd have, if, if we moved the DA out of there, we'd still have to create an office over there for that victim's assistance office, so we haven't really got into the details of. of what's going to really move around in the courthouse until we get, we got this done. We know kind of what we're going to do at, at the courthouse. But we got time. It won't be as extensive a move. A, it's a historical building. We're restricted on what we can do in moving walls. We can't move walls. We, I guess, I think we can penetrate some, in some cases, we can penetrate walls. But it's kind of like over here, they're concrete walls.
Correct.
That's why the courthouse is so non-functional for today's world of electronics. We got, you know, you go over there, you can walk up and down the stairs. We got cables running all over the place. Then you can't go, you can't go do it any other way. Just chase them around the ceilings. So it makes that difficult. So we, we will, there will be some things that will greatly help of expanding some operations at the courthouse.
Commissioner, did that answer your question about this facility?
With one, one additional question, and I apologize if this is redundant. But when do you expect to have that assessment completed?
Of this facility?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's already done as far as the original program. And we looked at all the different parts and pieces. So now that it's been, we've been engaged to move everything out there, I guess I'm kind of waiting on you guys to let us know if indeed you do want to move something back over here. Yeah?
Okay.
So it's kind of to be determined. Yeah.
Obviously, we've just got this, so we'll have to study it and digest it. One, one initial concern I do have is with the number of offices being placed out there and the lack of ability to do a lot of expansion. I just have a little, I have a little concern about that. Some of them to think about. I don't know, it's not a design issue so much. It might be just something to consider further. Maybe we can move, maybe it's as simple as moving fewer offices out there, which makes it, you know, important to what we would be doing with this building or other buildings we have already. So there's still, still a lot of moving parts to think about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Action item number four. Discuss and approval award to select grant management firm in grant pre-application, application and implementation services for the Hunt County 2025-2026 Texas Community Development Grant Fund Program as administered by the Texas Department of Agricultural. If applicable, entity's designated representative is authorized to negotiate and agree to a final fee on behalf of the entity. Rob, you want to brief us on anything towards this? Okay. All right. Okay. We've got, we've got a resolution here in your package, commissioners, which it looks like it's authorizing, maybe authorizing me to sign the agreement with them to move forward with applying for this block grant money. This was the 750,000, and it can be spent, it got expanded. Can you tell the public? So I know we got, we thought first, I think we were thinking just roads, but I think you told us last time it had expanded to other things potentially also.
The priorities within North Central Texas Cog are water, sewer, drainage, street projects, and they added in parks and recreational facilities.
Okay.
So, yes, and up to 750,000 now.
Right. Can you do multiples? If you chose to do two, or you had to do one?
If it was a water sewer project, which it's going to be a water, because the county doesn't handle sewer. If it was a water project with, with a water supply corporation, and you wanted to do that road, because it was underneath the road, most time it's in the easement. So it would more than likely just be a water, if it was with a wastewater, or, excuse me, a water supply corporation, or street projects, or, you know, a county type park.
Infrastructure based.
Infrastructure, yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, commissioners.
One question, please.
Sure.
Is there any type of a match in reference to this?
There is a 2% match for the county.
Okay. In reference to the 2%, would that allow us what work we do? Or would it be, can we use the work that we do towards something like that to be part of that 2%? Or is it money-wise?
It's a financial, not an encounter.
Good enough. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a resolution in front of us to authorize me to sign the administrative and project delivery services for, from Grant Works. Entertain a motion for approval of that.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number five. Consent to the formation of the Hunt County Committee for Proposals Received as per formal proposal, RFP number 242-24, inmate commissary services for Hunt County Sheriff's Office. The committee will consist of representatives from the Facilities Department, Information Systems Department, and Sheriff's Office. Members of the evaluation committee will be Chris Kilmer, Brandon Brand, Daniel Looney, Roger Seals, and Joshua Lutzfer. The jail administrator will aid the committee, but will not have a vote in the final recommendation of the committee to the commissioners' court. Chad, you have any comments you want to make? Or we okay with that?
Yes, sir. It's just time to renew our.
Come up to the mic, please. Sorry.
Chad Stroud, I'm the jail administrator. It's, it's time to renew our commissary contract. So we want to form this committee.
Okay. All right. Have you all already sent out the proposals, the request for proposals?
No, sir.
Okay.
The ad's going to be running in the paper, I believe, next weekend. And then we will send out the proposals as soon as the first ad goes out.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six. The fiscal year 2024 tobacco grant from the Texas Department of State, Health Services, Texas School Safety Center Tobacco Enforcement Program. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
A motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number seven. Formal bid number 254-24, road rock, 12-month contract effective October 8th, 2024 through October 7th, 2025, award to all qualified bidders for attached bid award tabulation and local government code 262.027E. Any questions, commissioners? Not. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number eight. Proposal from Walker Fence and Construction for reclaimed County Road 2727. Is that right?
Correct.
Reclaiming, that's part of what you took over.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
380.
Okay. Reclaiming and grinding the existing road surface, then blade and compact road for completion approximately 5280 feet long and 18 feet wide. Proposal total 43,580 per estimate, number 100, dated 8/15/2024. Funding from Contract Services 21-6671-3500-3115.
Yeah, commissioners, this is a road that's been in need of significant repairs for a while. And we just have had, not been able to get to, to it because of the special needs it has. Normal, normal patching repair methods would not be appropriate, and have not been adequate to, to it. So we chose to go out. And we also have a number of other roads that, you know, if this, if this works well, and I think it will, we might evaluate for contracting out in the future. So we went out and sought quotes, I guess, on it, and got, I think we talked about five different companies, and, and got about, got three quotes back. And this was the low one. And so that's what we're going with, pending the approval of the court.
Okay. And you're saying it's existing road surface. Is it rock?
They're going to take, bring a reclaimer in, grind it all up, relay it, restore the surface, lay it.
Is it oil sand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nine. Request for permission to do work within county right of way along County Road 1124. WP 10, which is located at the intersection of FM 36 and County Road 1124, will be replaced and upgraded in precinct one under normal stipulations.
Make a motion, we approve this?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 10. Request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in the right of way of Chapel Road in precinct two under normal stipulations.
Make a motion, we approve this construction under normal stipulation.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 11. Request for permission to do work within the county right of way along County Road 4200. We will be installing a single-phase overhead distribution line 50 feet across County Road 4200 and install a pole approximately one foot inside the eastern right of way of County Road 4210 in precinct four under normal stipulations.
Under County Road 4200, I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 12. Correcting agenda item 18,0449 from Commissioners' Court on October 24, 2023 to reflect the correct number of feet upgrade. The correction should show 3,288 feet of County Road 328, 3208 in precinct three.
I make a motion that we allow this correction in reference to it.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 13. Upgrade of approximately 3,775 feet of County Road 1144 from rock to oil sand in precinct one at county's expense.
Make a motion, we approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item 14. Widen County Road 4309, six feet for approximately 1,286 feet from dirt to rock and upgrading approximately 1,286 feet from rock to oil sand in precinct four. Money is in escrow.
Make a motion to approve. Money is in escrow.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item 15. Civil plans for Quinton RV Park Precinct Two. Brian, you want to brief us?
Okay. This is the, the RV park that's proposed in regards to the rezone, the zoning change that went through a couple of meetings ago. The civil plans have been reviewed and approved by our engineering representative. And they have also been approved, or approved for recommendation by the Lake Tewocany Zoning Commission.
Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action number, number 16. Replat Lot Three of Irman Estates in precinct one.
This is a replat, so it will need a public hearing. It meets all of our, our requirements. They're dividing a larger lot in, into two.
All right. This time I'll open it up to a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against the replat of Lot Three of Irman Estates, please step forward, state your name, address, and your approval for or against. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 17. Replat of lots one and two of Tri-Vet, Section One, Block One in precinct three. Brian?
Okay. This is, this is one where a, a neighbor has been possessing and using the property, grazing it and using it as a farm. He's finally going to purchase the property from the, from the neighboring property owner. So that's, that's why you get the kind of an odd L-shaped tract, not necessarily a flag lot. But he's purchasing the rear portion of the adjoining lot. Ultimately, no, no land use is going to be changing. He's just purchasing and keeping it for, for ag purposes.
And they're already flatted lots. So this wouldn't meet, but since they're already platted, it's, yeah.
That's right. Since they're platted, we've got to change that recorded document. So a replat is required. Typically, whenever you're, you have a neighbor to neighbor purchasing a piece to expand his farm, a plat is not required.
All right. This time I'll open this, we, to a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against replat of lots one and two of Tri-Vet, Section One, Block One, please come forward, state your name and address. Is there anybody on line that, I haven't asked that in a while. Nobody's on line. Okay. All right. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 18. The final plat of Greenway Edition in precinct one.
Okay. This one, it, it currently meets all of our requirements, save one. I want a, need a visibility easement there at the intersection in the southwest corner. It's intersection of two roads. So we need to have a visibility easement to, to allow that, that area stay open so that we don't have.
Trouble regarding that.
Public health, traffic issues.
What, is it 15 by 15, or?
30 by 30.
30 by 30. Okay.
That'll, that'll be reflected on the final copy that would be signed. This one, though, the, the developer is requesting at least a conditional approval. He's going to have to spend some money on upgrading a water line. He's also going to have to clear the right of way. And he's going to have to upgrade the road surface, widen the road surface a little bit. So I, I would recommend a conditional approval on this, pending the infrastructure, the required infrastructure upgrades.
In the easement?
In the, in the easement. That's right.
All right. Commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve this plat conditioned on the 30 by 30 site, visibility easement at the corner of the lot. And the, are we doing the upgrades, I guess? He needs to put money in escrow?
Yes. They'll have to, they'll have to pay for, for the materials as.
Okay. And so the payment of the escrow, so the upgrades can be made to the road, and he still has to clear the right of way.
And he still has to get with Caddo Basin and, and pay for their infrastructure upgrade as well.
So it's contingent on the water service being provided also.
Correct.
We got all those exceptions. You got them all, Becky?
I'll get them.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action number 19. The final plat of Gear Edition in precinct one.
This one meets all county requirements.
Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Aren't you all glad that Brian, you all had to put up with looking at all these plats? Action item 20. The final plat of Buffalo Creek, Phase One, precinct three.
Okay. This is the, the first phase of a larger development. These are just the lots facing the existing right of ways. I would also recommend a conditional approval on this one, pending the right of way clearing, the road surface upgrade, some additional culverts that are required by their engineer, and obviously, the utility upgrades, any kind of water line upgrades that are required.
Also widen the road.
That's right. Upgrading the road surface.
If I may, basically, we're going to have a meeting. We're going to get a meeting with the people in reference. We have one culvert in particular on one, on the north side. We have three on the other one. But one of them is also in reference to on the right of way as far as the state, in which what we'll do is try to figure out how to work with that.
That's right.
But I'm looking forward to meeting you and meeting with y'all to look at that, try to get it going.
Yes. The, the road on the north is rather narrow, and it's, it's rock. And it, it needs some attention before he gets all these, all these new residential lots on it. So.
Okay.
Also, money will be, once a decision is made, money will be put in escrow in reference to covering it.
Yes.
All right. So I need a motion to approve with the condition of road upgrades.
Right of way.
Cleaning the right of ways, and looking at the drainage situation and culverts. And is there another one?
Water line.
Water line.
I shall move.
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Did you get all that, Becky? All right. Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. All right, is there anything else? Sure, you hadn't spoke to us in a while, I thought you were just mad.
I'm just trying to let you guys get through your agenda. I wanted to ask on...
State your name and address for the record, please.
Mark White, 3315, County Road 1108, Celeste, Texas. On item number eight, is this the first time we've really tried this methodology of reclaiming and regrading roads in Hunt County? Or is this kind of a first test? Because you mentioned, like you said, if this is going to work, then we might start using this process.
It's not new to regrade, to reclaim and regrade roads. This is, contracting now is not something I've done personally. I wasn't speaking on behalf of the rest of Commissioners.
Okay, gotcha. So it's not new to Hunt County?
I actually have a reclamer that we use and we reclaim roads with.
Okay.
So we've been doing it for two years in our precinct.
In Precinct 4?
Just do an overlay repair on that road, which wouldn't even have worked, would have been probably six figures.
So is this methodology better than trying to do an overlay? Or is it just overlays in this situation is not efficient or effective?
It is kind of an overlay, you're putting it back over.
It depends on the situation.
Okay, depends on the road and the damage.
Like Mark says, it depends on the situation. With reclaiming it, you're able to build your base back up, you're able to put your base back down, and then come back and re-top it with new material.
Perfect, thank you.
A lot of times you get enough material, oil in there and all, that when you mix it, it revitalizes it and you can put it back down and not have to do anything. So there's some, it's a real cost saving, some old, old roads that are really dried out, then you have to mix in some new oil sand.
Which is what David's been doing over there with his reclamer.
Right.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
What we're doing is we're basically putting, ringing up the ramp that we put down, putting more emotion on it.
All right, we got anything for Executive? All right, entertaining motion to go in Executive Session under items 1 through 4.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? We're in Executive Session at 11:27.
We standing here or going down?
Uh... Uh...
Shows were up.
All right, we're back in regular session at 11:44. Is there anything else before the court today? Can we check the comments?
Yeah, I will, Molly. They can't talk about the budget, right? I just have some for that.
Okay, we'll read that. Okay, we'll get them at the Friday meeting. All right, entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned at 11:45. Thank you, everyone.